Counselor Lauren Question is not here. Now, you all have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda circulated? Hearing none, motion to approve the agenda is in order. Moved by Daniel at the second there. Seconded by Gerard. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Item number four.
If I put just a housekeeping item before you get rocking and rolling. So, the sound system was on, was on the fly today. So, if you wish to be acknowledged by the chair, and the chair acknowledges you, just give Mike a minute to turn your microphone on before you speak. So, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
Good enough. All right, item number 4.1, mid-year budget review. Mr. Greg Shea, I'm assuming that would be you, so if that is, you have the floor.
Well, we'll be shortly. We're still transmitting one item to our IT control center. We're going to display it on the screen. We might have that one, but I can't read that.
For clarification, I was making a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting for September 16.
Aye.
So...
When the grant workshop.
Okay, so, I did not make the motion to approve the grant workshop agenda. I just want that on record. I will make a motion to approve the grant workshop agenda, but on my screen, I had the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting.
I do believe in the start of the meeting though, I said I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda circulated.
You get it remembered? I was not looking at the same agenda.
That's not my mistake. You approved the agenda.
No, that's what I'm...okay.
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to correct my mistake.
Okay.
That's all.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
Is the grants workshop being filmed, or no?
It's not being filmed, but the minutes are going to be public.
Thank you.
Nope.
Good darn. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. You all have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions or deletions? The agenda is circulated. Hearing none, a motion to approve the agenda circulated is in order. Moved by Counselor Lauren Question, seconded by Counselor Trevor Cunningham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Item number four, is there any declarations of conflict interests? If there is, and you find that there's one through any part of the meeting, just please declare, and it will be recorded by our recording secretary. Item number five, we're going to skip over until we have Evan show up. He's not present at the time, but we have other business that we can do. So, we're going to skip ahead to item number six, correspondence. There's no correspondence that's been attached. And then, we'll move on to item number seven, new business. 7.1, Violence in the Workplace Revisions. Madam CAO, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm just waiting for my PDF to load. I should probably be speaking into this microphone. I'm sorry. So, at the recommendation of the solicitor, based on the recent test of the violence in the workplace policy, staff undertook a review of the document and tried to address some areas where there may have been tools missing, or some weaknesses. And in the document that's attached to your agenda, we've highlighted those areas where we've suggested changes. Primarily, what we've sought to do is to clarify the definition of a complaint, to clarify the steps in a process, and to assign specific timelines with each step of the process. And so, what you have before you are the recommended amendments or changes to the policy. And if it pleases Committee of the Whole, then we would move it forward to council for ratification.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
I'll move that we move these revisions to regular scheduled council.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Trevor Cunningham to move the Violence in the Workplace Policy to regular council. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. Is there any discussion on that motion? If there is none, I would like to make one quick comment about that. One thing that we found with the Violence in the Workplace Policy, the original one, that was dated, I think it was July 24, 2019, is the balancing timelines into an investigation. We had a little bit of trouble with that due to, we enacted this policy during the COVID-19 outbreak, when we first started having the restrictions on what the meetings was. And I'm glad to see that there's timelines in here. When the complaint is received, the investigator will have 14 calendar days to collect statements from victims and stuff like that, the last time, whether it was the fault of COVID-19 or anything like that. But at least it's spelled out in this new policy, and I'm very glad to see that. That's one area I believe that needed to be updated, and had timelines in there. So, an investigation, instead of taking months, would be done in a more timely fashion. That's one thing that I'm really pleased to see there. So, I thank you very much to the staff and CAO for addressing that concern that we had. Counselor Patty Durkey.
I totally agree. I think timelines are really important. And I'm also pleased to say that, to see the inclusion of an external investigator in there as well, when appropriate, because for any of us, sometimes people are just too, a little bit too close to the situation, or to the person who may be involved. And I think that could cause some challenges. So, thank you for including that.
There was an additional point that we did amend, and I think it's noteworthy for the conversation today. So, in section 5.5, where there's discussion around possible ramifications for somebody who does something contrary to the policy, there was language on there referring to when it's an elected official, that individual's seat on council. There's no enabling legislation around that, so that's been stricken. But there is a recommendation for a provision under 5.6, that if deemed necessary by council, council could enact the sections of the Municipal Government Act that might remove the warden or the deputy warden from those chairs, if deemed appropriate by council.
Before I go to Counselor Daniel Allen, I'm going to question you about that. Should it not be stated in there, I think, is it 12.7 in the Municipal Government Act? Should that be actually stated in there?
The reason why we didn't cite the specific section of the Municipal Government Act is that if the Municipal Government Act changes, we wouldn't have to change this policy document to reflect that.
Yes, that's absolutely true, because the NSFM is undergoing work for the violence, or working on the province, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, that would be a separate document, the Code of Conduct. But if the Municipal Government Act was restructured, and the sections were renumbered, and we referenced a number or a section in our policy relating back to Municipal Government Act, then we'd have to make sure we keep that current. And the essence is council's ability to determine who's in the chair and the deputy warden's seat, and not be fixated on the section of the Municipal Government Act, but the content of the Municipal Government Act.
Counselor Daniel Allen, and Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
It's just around the wording on section 5.8. I like the idea of the timeframes, but depending on the complexity of the situation, additional time may be allotted to proper research. How can we be sure that investigator will have time to do it in 14 days?
Yep.
The complexity part, I'm just, you know, will there be a way for the investigator to ask for more time, just because of a busy schedule, or something of that nature, if need be?
So, we went to Whitwire Homes for our advice on this section, because the timeline that the team was originally contemplating was more around 30 days and 45 days. And what we heard from Whitwire Homes was, that's actually not considered appropriate or an industry standard. If you have an incident that is generally felt that an investigation is required under this policy, it's important enough that time and attention should be given to it, to resolve it in this recommended timeline.
No, I would agree with that 100%. But if we are getting an investigator from outside of, you know, obviously, it has to go by the investigator's timeline as well. So, I'm just wondering, like, just where it says depending on the complexity, we're only giving one way for them to extend, if they needed an extra few days, like, is there...I might be nitpicking on the wording here, but...
No, so, the investigator would liaise with council if an investigation was underway. And so, you know, if there was a need for more time or more information, then if it's being discussed and provided, as long as it's recorded and the reasons for it are recorded, I think the goal is to arrive at a clear understanding of the situation, but balance timeliness.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Speaking to the issue that you raised with the Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities' work around violence in the workplace, not necessarily, but it's Council Code of Conduct, all those types of things, and who would be investigating, there's some conversation there. What I will say about our experience is, I think we demonstrated good governance, generally speaking, around this issue. We had a policy, we followed the policy, and now we're following up with revisions to the policy after the real-world test, right? And we all know that our warden was the person who tested the policy, or actions tested the policy, and now we're making revisions. Having said that, I would be reluctant to cede our control of this area municipally to a provincially mandated or investigator. I think that we've shown, as a council, and as municipal council, good governance and the ability to police ourselves. After all, if we're elected by the people, I would expect that they expect that we could police ourselves, as a group of folks in the council. And by ceding that investigative responsibility, and responsibility for controlling our own memberships, within the provincial legislative frame, I think that would be an error. So, I'd like to add this topic, not necessarily directly germane to the motion at hand, but I'd like to add this topic to our next regularly scheduled council meeting, with an eye to debating the issue and potentially writing NSFM and the province a letter. I mean, if they want to give us some additional powers to either remove a councillor, or whatever be the case, that would be their issue. I don't think that's necessary. But by the same token, I wouldn't want to cede our ability to govern ourselves to another level of government. I don't know if they're any better equipped than we are. I mean, MLAs misbehave across the country. Federal MPs misbehave across the country. I'm not certain that any of those levels of government's ability to deal with those issues are any better than ours, their traffic records any better than ours. I'd argue that what we've done here is very good, within the legislative frame, with laws and no disclosure, specifically the Municipal Government Act. So, I think we should think about that, reflect on it, and have that conversation. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
So, what you're asking, counselor, is when this comes forward on council, that there'd be another agenda item in regards to what you just mentioned, maybe writing the NSFM, or the provincial government, or MLA, that we would rather not have an independent body govern us? We've, we're working, we found that our policy worked well. Is that...
We would hire an independent investigator, but that the issue wouldn't necessarily go to the province, and they'd hire an independent investigator, is what I'm saying.
So, okay, I guess we could add that. Yeah, it's the AL.
Yep, so, what I'll do is, absolutely, we'll put the topic on the agenda, and I'll also bring forward the response that Modi submitted to the province when we did the consultations on the legislative review pieces, because we did formulate a response to the Code of Conduct dialogue. And I think that we spoke to the independent nature of municipal government, as an order of government, in a self-regulating order of government. But I'll bring that document forward, where I'll include it for your review, to help bear out your discussion at that time. But just to be clear then, so what is being recommended in section 5.1, around providing the municipality the option to hire an external investigator where appropriate? That is a new sentence, and it is for an investigation under this policy. And it comes out of a recognition that where the municipal solicitor might be required to undertake an investigation, it's possible that there's a very close relationship from time to time, depending on the nature of the investigation. And so, for the sake of transparency and fairness for everyone involved, that tool is available to council to use where appropriate.
Trevor, you still have the floor.
Yes, and I agree with that, and that does go to, I guess, address maybe a perceived or real weakness, and sort of maybe one of the things we might have done a little bit differently, if we had to do it all over again. And I think that adds weight to the fact that we should keep this function at a municipal level, as opposed to ceding it or passing it on, investigative piece, to a provincial body. So, I think this strengthens our case to have it remain here, and given that we had, I think, a reasonable result with regard to what we decided to do around the warden, I think, I think good due diligence, and pretty good, really, policy around it. But again, policy knowledge being proved, and that's what we're doing, so I go with my additional comments.
Counselor Trevor, oh, sorry, Counselor Lauren Question.
I totally agree with what Counselor Cunningham was saying about that. I think we're elected to try to make our own decisions with external help unless we need it. And I totally support what Counselor Cunningham was saying.
Any other comments? I do have one additional question to, would be directly to the CAO, and it's in regards to that complaint that's informally and formally presented. I remember how I did the last time, and how I made the complaint under the Violence in the Workplace Policy formal, but what's considered an informal?
So, there was no definition of formal or informal complaint in the document. It was an issue that was debated at the time. And so, the definitions section clarifies by saying complaint means a formal, brackets, written or verbal allegation against a party of a situation that is unsatisfactory or unacceptable. So, that defines a complaint.
Okay.
So, verbal or written allegation against a party. Doesn't say it has to come from a certain party or representative.
But what is considered a formal complaint, like I did the last time, where I stated the policy, and I asked that the email be treated as a formal complaint? Is that when it becomes a formal?
So, in the previous iteration of the policy that we were working under at the time, there was debate about whether or not correspondence from an external party was actually a complaint.
Yeah. Counselor Patty Durkey.
That was part of my concern, is that there had been a verbal complaint, and that wasn't being taken as a formal complaint, and therefore, was not really going to initiate an investigation. So, that didn't actually, until a written complaint was done. So, we have to make sure that if someone does give a verbal complaint, that that may need to be investigated, depending on whether or not it's from council or staff. So, that's what we have to be careful about. And again, the letters, the other two. Well, there was the question, well, is this a formal complaint, or isn't it? Well, if someone writes a letter and makes a complaint, to me, that needs to be, that's justification for investigation. So, there's the question. And the other thing, respectfully, is I just want to say, I'm extremely thankful that we had and have our Violence in the Workplace Policy. There are a lot of organizations that do not have anything to this extent. And in terms of the Code of Conduct being done by NSFM with support from the province, I think we have to take a look at that when it comes out, to see, you know, before we can make any judgment calls on that, I think we have to have a look at it, to see the direction that they're recommending.
All right, thank you very much for that. I remember, this process was very uncomfortable for everybody. But like, as Counselor Patty Durkey said, I'm glad that we had it in place, because we had a tool to work with. And what we're doing now is updating our tool to problems that we have. Yes.
Yeah, and just to continue from experience, there was an incident earlier where, quite frankly, there was nowhere to go. There was no one to talk to, there was no direction, there was nowhere to really lodge a formal complaint. And I think that that's been an issue across the province for a long time. And I think that's, NSFM has done a great job to try to formalize that. After attending a Code of Conduct workshop quite a while ago, I believe, Lauren, you were there with me, there were a lot of complaints that were made, and nobody had any direction of how to, particularly, this is for councils, like, where do you go for help? Like, who's, we don't have a boss, we don't have a supervisor that, you know, we can go speak to, and even if you did, where do we go? So, you know, this is going to give some direction. We have our direction, thankfully, for those people who have had some issues.
All right, if there's no more discussion on the motion to move this to council, I'd entertain a question on the motion there. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you very much, council. Okay, item number eight, other business, rural internet. This is an ongoing item that we have on our Committee of the Whole agenda, and we all know, we heard the announcement put out by Develop Nova Scotia. And Madam CAO, do you have any updates or comments in this regard?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, when Develop Nova Scotia, the province of Nova Scotia, and the municipality made their releases on our successful bid for a project under Round 2, we did get several questions. We had released the list of communities that would see work done, and we continued to receive inquiries from individuals with specific civic addresses, saying, am I in or am I out? And so, the municipality is working with our partners at the REN to collect and curate those lists of civic addresses, because we are seeing that there are pockets of density, pockets of a lot, a high number of civic addresses near where projects begin or end, or...so, we're working to see if we can maximize those build designs, and get as many civic addresses as possible included before we release the maps. So, that conversation is happening now with Modi and the REN, and the Internet Service Provider in Develop Nova Scotia. So, I do know that people are anxious to see the maps released, and they're not being released for this reason. We're trying to get as much mileage out of the investment as we can before we release the maps. So, that's where we're at with that piece. We're continuing to move ahead with the Arcadia-Pinkneys Point-Hibram Business Park project. So, as you know, we did amend the contract for the Round 1 project, and we included an investment to see fiber installed in the business park as well. And so, I think Counselor Allen can probably confirm that there's actually physical activity taking place around the poles. Yes, yep. So, we are on track to see that work completed by the end of November, middle of December.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? Counselor Patty Durkey.
Here, I just want to add that, you know, there's a lot of concern about some areas that haven't been identified in Phase 2. And within the areas of Phase 2, particularly for public knowledge, is that if people are having difficulty with service, and their service is poor, then it's really important for them to contact Evan Mammoth from the REN to let them know. Because as our CAO has stated, there have been amendments made to Phase 1. Well, amendments can be made to Phase 2. So, they've identified 97% of the province that need service, and actually, interesting, there are other areas way worse than we are, and which is costing a lot more money to their municipal councillors than what we're paying. But there's still that 3%, and that, so, as, I just want to share Jennifer's comments from Develop yesterday, we're not done. So, just because Phase 2 is coming out, that doesn't mean they're done, and they do know there's other areas. But if someone within the Phase 2 has difficulty, then it's important to let the REN know.
I see Counselor Trevor Cunningham, and Counselor Gerard LeBlanc.
I'd just like to make the comment that even the Hibram-Daten area, which is quite densely populated for a rural municipality, relatively speaking, the Internet service that is available is very, very slow. We've got a lot of university students at home, including my own kids, that need faster download speeds, a lot of video, the university profs. So, this is a big, big, big issue in Nova Scotia for rural communities. So, perhaps a question through you, to Angelique, just to let her know that even, that the service is very, very poor, and I know that we're addressing communities that have super slow or non-existent cell and Internet services, but what's on, what's next on the docket for the improvement of service that really make it usable? Because right now, it's not usable. I've even gone to the extent of renting a space, and small space for my kids in the town in Yarmouth, for high-speed Internet, because they were not able to work at home.
So, I'll start that answer, Counselor Cunningham, and maybe Evan can fill in my gaps. Hopefully, Evan has done a good job educating me on some level. So, if you think back to the work we've been doing with Evan on this project, we've looked consistently at maps that the CRTC and Develop Nova Scotia are using to identify geographically areas that are not served, underserved, or well-served. And that determination is being made based on data available to those decision-makers at that time. And so, what Evan is encouraging us to do as communities, is get granular, get right down to the road, right down to the civic address, and see what we can do to verify the actual service level that really is available, independent of any information that may have been submitted to the CRTC. So, to Counselor Cunningham's point, if we have communities where, you know, we can do the speed test and capture it, and send it off to Evan, Evan can curate a list, and he can cross-reference that with what the CRTC is saying, and we can prove areas where they may need to amend their determination. Is that right?
Response. So, the other piece of that, too, is when you're looking at the eligibility maps right now for the existing funding programs that are out there, the typical threshold for the minimum speed at which the funding would apply, anything below 50 megabits per second, that's where those funding sources typically are available. In a lot of cases, there's already high-speed, quote-unquote, offered in many communities. And if they advertise a speed that's above that 50, it has the ability to impact whether or not the funding's available. That's when, as Victoria mentioned, you need to run some speed tests, take a look at some bills. We'd kind of pool that information, and from there, we'd have to challenge the eligibility maps. So, that's going to be the more complicated areas. When you start needing proof on a street-by-street basis, it's going to be time-consuming. We're hoping that most of the solutions that we're looking at right now are going to be a little bit simpler than that. There are eligibility maps out there from different levels of government, as Victoria mentioned, and most of them paint a picture that we want to see, that there is eligibility still. But there are going to be those spots where it's a little bit more difficult.
And also, on top of that, there was talk at a meeting that we had with NSFM, with Develop Nova Scotia, about the contract specifically that was signed, that the Internet Service Providers are going to be held via... providers are going to be held via the contracts on what the actual speeds were. There's also a lot of concern here lately where the internet is used so much, through Zoom meetings and kids going back to school and people working at home, that the network has really slowed down. So someone who might have met or had the advertised a 50 up, 10 down, or whatever, whatever that is, is not happening anymore. And there was a lot of concern, at least that I heard in the meeting and the parts that I could hear, because my internet was real spotty. I could hardly hear even through just a, through the call. I couldn't, there was no way I could do video. But I'm in one of those areas that I get it off, it's cell tower. So.
In situations like that, a cell tower signal, your speeds are going to be underneath that threshold, and therefore theoretically, there'd be funding available. Anybody that's on like a fiber connection, you could have everyone in your household watching Netflix at once and still be able to do a Zoom call. So, yeah.
The only option I have is to haul it through a, through a cell tower and have a booster just to grab enough signal to even think about getting a speed of thought. And the more the internet is used, the less it is. Is there any other questions or comments on the rural internet? Oh, sorry, Counselor Gerard LeBlanc, I do remember you had your hand up. I forgot to write it down.
Evan is in the conversation here when I ask him a question.
He most certainly can.
Okay. What, what were the difficulty places you were talking about?
That's difficult to say without looking directly at a map. A lot of the times-
Basically, the Mood Road?
Well, no, Mood Road shows as eligible for funding.
Oh.
Yeah.
And the Brenton Road?
Yeah, that also shows as eligible for funding. I'll mention right now, any of the areas that have not yet been included and we know have low service?
Okay.
I'm compiling a list of roads that I'm communicating back to the funders and to Bell. So there's hope for all of those addresses in an upcoming announcement.
Just, just hope? Just hope?
Well, I, I'm not going to make a firm commitment without being the funder myself.
I want to use this in my campaign.
Yeah, there's optimism.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Is there any more? What's their question?
That's right. Send me an email with the name of the road and I'll make sure it's on there. Yeah.
All right. I'd like to remind Councilor, when you're speaking, please speaking your mic get a little bit closer. We could hear you some, Counselor, questions. So there's no more on that item. Item 8.1, we'll move back to item number five, presentations. Western Regional Enterprise Network, I'd like to welcome Angelique and Evan both from the REN. If you're prepared to start, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to kick off by thanking Council for the recent support that we've received from you. We just had our five-year intermunicipal agreement renewed. So thank you very much. For us, it definitely displays a vote of confidence that you have in us. And the fact that we have multi-year funding is really critical. And when we talk about projects like internet and the energy project that we're talking about today, you'll see it is important to have that long-term commitment and long-term focus. So I just wanted to kind of paint the scene for why we're doing this energy investment work. And when you talk about economic development and you think about things that are critical to do economic development, there are some issues, some barriers that we do have, and things that we have been focusing on in our strategies over the years. So you have the access to talent. So we've talked about this at this council table before, that that's something that I'm sure you hear all over the place from businesses in your, in your districts, that people are looking for talent, for people, for workers. We hear that everywhere consistently. And then internet, we just talked about. So we have a couple of those infrastructure issues. And again, internet, I don't have to tell you why it's critical in order to do business, in order to work from home during a pandemic, in order to study online. It's more important now than ever. So in terms of, again, infrastructure, we have some issues with our energy grid. So when you look at the transmission lines that come through this region, and Evan's going to be presenting that shortly, we have some shortcomings. So we're looking for access to reliable power. So when we have frequent service interruptions, again, that's going to impact our business community. So the cost of, you know, having to shutter the doors for an afternoon or a day, or sometimes more than one day, that really takes its toll on, on business and the local economy. So that, through our strategic focus, we're looking at investments. So we want to invest in our private sector. We want to address those talent needs that I was talking about. And we want to invest in public sector as well. So this is part of our strategic focus around the public sector piece. And Evan's going to, we have a recorded presentation, actually. We are presenting this work across the region from Barrington to Digby. We wanted to have a consistent presentation, and then we'll have time for a little bit of discussion at the end.
Hello, councilors. I am Evan Nemeth, an Economic Development Officer for the Western Regional Enterprise Network. In this recorded presentation, I will introduce you to the Western Region Energy Investment Plan. The transmission lines that enter the Western Region through the Valley Corridor are 69-kilovolt lines from the Tremont/Greenwood area and onwards. The 69-kilovolt lines are the red lines on the image on your screen, and they have the smallest capacity of the lines listed in the image. These lines, in addition to the blue 138-kilovolt lines along the south shore, are responsible for the delivery of power to the local power grid that powers the region's households, businesses, and institutions. They also allow for the transmission of energy generated in the region to other areas that need it in the province and beyond. The 69-kilovolt lines running from Tremont to Yarmouth have limited capacity remaining on them for the transmission of energy. This limited capacity has the potential to limit the expansion of existing businesses within the region and the attraction of new businesses to the region. In addition, this area has substantial green energy opportunities with strong coastal winds, large powerful tides, and some of the highest photovoltaic potential in Canada. With limited space on the transmission lines for the export of energy, there is limited potential to take advantage of these opportunities. Aside from the status of the transmission system, a community energy planning document from the town of Bridgewater identified the cost of energy in their community as $89 million in 2016 alone, with potential for energy efficiency models to save businesses and residents a combined $2 billion by 2050. In February 2019, the Western Regional Enterprise Network, with funding support from the Department of Energy and Mines Low Carbon Communities Fund, contracted consultants at Sustainable Solutions Group, or SSG, to assist with the development of an energy investment plan for the Western Region. Their objectives were to create a baseline of energy consumption to inform decision-making, to identify opportunities for energy efficiency improvements for existing and future buildings, to identify opportunities for green energy generation and storage within the region, and identify opportunities for district energy and heating, providing a market for waste wood from the forestry industry. Using a variety of data sources, including Property Valuation Services Corporation, Nova Scotia Power, Inc., Fuel Sales Data, Waste Check, and our municipal partners, the consultants at SSG estimated that energy purchases in the Western Region in 2016 amounted to $327 million, with the average household spending $5,800 annually on energy in its various forms, such as gas, diesel, firewood, furnace oil, and electricity. If opportunities can be found to reduce expenditures on energy generated outside of our region, this can help to keep funds in the local economy and the pockets of residents and businesses. The highest energy demand in the region was attributed to both land and marine transportation, representing a combined 68%. As such, gasoline and diesel represented the highest energy sources. Electricity amounted to just 15% of energy demand in the region for 2016, though that percentage is expected to climb drastically over time with greater adoption of heat pump technologies and electric vehicles. Acknowledging that the region's electricity demands will only grow over time, there are two means to create space on the transmission lines. The first is to reduce demand by increasing energy efficiency and energy conservation at businesses, institutions, municipal buildings, and households. This can be done by improving insulation, installing more energy-efficient appliances, adopting more energy-efficient heat generators such as heat pumps, and using smart technology to optimize the times of day that the energy is used. While there are expenditures required to create these efficiencies, they will directly translate to cost savings over time. The second method is to increase the supply of energy by creating more green energy generation sites within the Western Region, such as solar, tidal, wind, biogas, or district energy. This, too, will require expenditures, but they will translate into revenue over time. The additional benefits to these actions are that they would reduce the reliance on imported energy, thereby reducing the likelihood and duration of power outages. A list of 26 energy opportunities were identified by SSG that could improve energy efficiency and increase energy generation, all while lowering greenhouse gas emissions. They have been consolidated into categories which I will touch on quickly. Building retrofits and energy efficiency upgrades, such as insulation improvements, water efficiency improvements, and heat pumps, would lower the total energy required to heat buildings. Cellulose insulation made from waste wood or recycled newspaper has similar thermal performance to fiberglass insulation and can be blown into the wall cavities or installed as batts. Waste wood typically has a value of $110 per tonne as fuel, while cellulose insulation is worth 10 times that amount. This creates a new market for waste wood. Electric vehicles will increase the reliance on electricity as a fuel source, but the efficiencies gained from the above two opportunities will more than compensate for them. Further, they are typically charged overnight, reducing the demand on peak hours. Hydrogen is useful as a fuel that has potential for the high energy demands of the marine transportation sector. Power to hydrogen uses periods of excess generation from renewable energy to generate hydrogen using electrolysis. The figure on the screen displays that the total energy consumed, if these energy efficiency actions are implemented, will roughly have the total amount of energy consumed in the region. The Clean Energy Scenario envisions the installation of 221 megawatts of combined wind and tidal energy, as well as 161 megawatts of solar PV, primarily for local consumption. Each installation would be accompanied by energy storage, such as batteries, to balance the inconsistent generation characteristics of these renewable technologies. The winds don't always blow, the sun doesn't always shine, and the tide's slow four times a day. A share of the solar PV capacity will be installed on homes and businesses through a program such as net metered. Organic waste from the agriculture, fisheries, and forestry sectors has the potential to be used in an anaerobic digester, similar to the facility that had been running in Waymouth. It is estimated that the equivalent to approximately 300,000 litres of diesel could be generated each year from a site similar in scale to that in Waymouth. The figure on the screen displays that the total energy generated within the region will dramatically increase as the need for electricity increases over time. By 2050, it projects a scenario in which all the energy that the region needs is generated from within the region itself. Each of the opportunities in the Western Region Energy Investment Plan projects the net change in person years of employment or job opportunities associated with them. In total, it is estimated that there is the potential to generate almost 4,800 person years of employment by 2050, or an average of 160 jobs per year. While you'll notice that the transportation sector implies that there would be a rather steep decline in employment, this is primarily reflected in the manufacturing of road-based vehicles due to automation, and those jobs are not typically located within our part of the world. These jobs would often be the sort that would require post-secondary education, which would provide an opportunity for the region's Nova Scotia Community College Burge Campus and University St. Anne to develop and train the workforce. There is presently a global appetite for green energy and green energy technologies to combat climate change. In Canada, there is funding available through the Federal Investing in Canada Plan, with a total of $828 million for projects in Nova Scotia alone, of which green energy projects are applicable. Invest Nova Scotia has a fund for projects between $500,000 to $3 million, which includes green energy projects. And the Federal Build Canada Small Communities Fund has a total of $42.6 million for Nova Scotia that includes a green energy component. In closing, the opportunities within the plan, if implemented, have the potential to lower energy expenditures through increased efficiencies, increase energy revenues through the generation and storage of energy, support our forestry and fisheries industries by offering markets for their waste streams, improve the region's energy security by utilizing locally generated energy, and create space on the transmission lines for the export of energy to other regions. The Western Regional Enterprise Network released a second request for proposals in August 2020 for implementation services to enact the actions located within the Western Region Energy Investment Plan. The work was awarded to MCC Energy Strategies, Inc. Their role will be to identify the top two to four opportunities located within the Energy Investment Plan, engage with relevant stakeholders, such as private sector, industry organizations, Nova Scotia Power, et cetera, to identify relevant funding opportunities or financial instruments, and to submit application to those funds. The work is now underway and will continue into this winter. I would like to thank you all for your time.
So maybe just to really briefly recap some of the key points. So for us, it's about addressing some of the grid capacity issues. It doesn't mean that we don't want to hold Nova Scotia Power accountable either. We're in the process of asking for more information regarding outages. And we've asked for our local chambers and boards of trade to, to help us in getting that information as well. But in terms of addressing the issues, the grid issues, by reducing demands and increasing efficiency and increasing supply and having some local generation and storage opportunities. So it's a little bit of both. From an economic development perspective and an opportunities identification perspective, we know in our region that there are key sectors. We have fisheries, we have forestry, and we do have a number of green initiatives, green energy initiatives that are already in the region. So we really want to kind of look at where the value lies in those three sectors. And we've been really taking a hard look at green energy and how it relates to the forestry sector. Because we know that post-Northern Pulp closure, that forestry sector has had a huge impact in our, it's had a huge impact on our region as well. And, you know, economic development perspective, again, just to recap, we have more money circulating locally. We want to keep that money here. New and innovative job creation to retain some of our talent here and to attract new talent. We want to look at a sustainable future when you look at our fisheries and our forestry sector, and identify and support the best opportunities for economic returns. So this, this report was a very high-level report. We needed to look at the baseline energy consumption in the region and then model out what a future, a green future would look like. So now our board has identified that one of the key priorities between now and the end of fiscal is diving down deeper in some of those opportunities that will have the best return for the region. So that's the work that has been awarded. And we really do believe that there are some large-scale opportunities out there. And we think that the region is very well positioned to capture some of those opportunities.
Well, thank you very much, Angelique. I see Counselor Trevor Cunningham and his hand up. So Counselor Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor. you have the floor.
Thank you for a good presentation, and I would agree with you that the region's generally well-positioned to generate energy, and of course, the savings piece will, I guess, allow some more of our transmission capacity, limited transmission capacity to export power and maybe do some positive things. I will say that there, and certainly that the, the demand for, you know, for the electrical grid will go up, because obviously, maybe even there'll be more fishing boats and those types of things that will move away from gasoline and diesel to electric and hydrogen and all these other energy sources. But I will say about the inconsistency piece, one of the things that I've seen, aside from FCM, it's not talked about a lot, maybe not even that politically, I guess maybe there's not a political appetite for it, but there's been a lot of research done on small-scale nuclear. It's not there yet, but it may be, given the greenhouse gas issue, which is great, everybody agrees it's great, that might be something that we may want to look into. It's a burgeoning area of research, and it may be the future. I mean, there are all kinds of issues with waste products, we know, although the smaller scale plants, you know, that are dealing with tens of thousands rather than hundreds, rather than thousands of people to supply power to, may be something we want to start looking at, you know, a little bit. This is next year, the next year, maybe not even the next decade, but having said that, I think it's something we should have on our radar a little bit, at least in terms of, you know, a footnote certainly in your report. The other piece is, energy does drive the economy. I mean, we all know, like, places like Iceland, for instance, it has high growth, we don't have that, but we do have the potential for a lot of wind power, you know, data centers and all those types of things, huge energy consumers, those are industries that, that may come our way if we have, you know, cheap, green energy. But I think, I think, I would like to see a little bit of thought go, go toward the small-scale nuclear piece that's not been mentioned, and it is, of course, it does solve totally the greenhouse gas issue, has other issues associated with it, but I think, I think it should be mentioned in the report to an extent.
Right. I admit, I'm not fully up to speed on the status of the smaller-scale nuclear plants, certainly not writing that off. It's something we would consider if it made sense for our region. I think we already have substantial green energy opportunities such as wind, solar, and tidal that are exciting to explore here. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't be open to taking a peek at nuclear as well.
Councillor Lauren, question?
You mentioned tidal was one of the possibilities. We've seen what happened up in Minus Basin with that tidal program up there that it failed, or went make around to whatever happened there to it. I'm not, I'm not really supportive of the tidal part, the wind, definitely, we have lots of wind here, the solar, I think it's a great idea, and the energy storage is a great part. The tidal power, I think our fishing industry is being stressed enough with some other, other factors such as that. I do know we had a presentation one time about the tidal project out there, it turns so slowly, doesn't really bother, bother fishing and whatnot, but we really haven't been able to establish that tidal power is a good thing in this area, right? So I'm very skeptical of that. Now, one other thing you mentioned about the waste wood. I'm not crazy about earning waste wood for power either, but did you mention about using waste wood for insulation?
Yep, that's one possibility.
Okay. Because it's organic, will it not break down over the years?
It would be a cellulose, a complex material, so I don't believe that it's subject to that. Now, in the right conditions, yes, but you'd have to keep it away from humidity.
Yeah. There's, that's an interesting one.
I would like to note, I don't think that the tidal piece, it's not quite cut and dry that that's harmful to the fishing industry. I don't believe that the science supports that yet. I think that, you know, there's absolutely more room to explore all of the options there and make sure that the environmental scans say that it's safe, but there's two projects being demonstrated right now in the passages of Digby Neck, so those ones up till now have been successful. I understand that there's been some that have had a little bit more difficulties over time, but this is a new technology, so.
Okay, well, I do know, I was through a presentation one time to look for one of the new ones, and they said it didn't bother the fish habitat, but I still sceptic on that sort of thing, so.
I got it. Sorry, I didn't quite catch that. Could you please repeat it?
Well, that, that specific component will definitely lead to the scientists, but yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Trevor Cunningham, sorry.
So, yeah, and to that point, I have, I guess, done a number of presentations about tidal power, and again, it's early days, they're just demonstration sites, it's extremely powerful, they're extremely powerful currents here. They may have some advantage for the, for the, you know, for us certainly, and, but my understanding is, like, it all depends on what you're talking about, right? Like, there's a whole bunch of test technologies out there, but we're not talking about, you know, moving forward, I don't think, anything like the San Antipolis River where they're, they're blocking off large sections and can have really, you know, big impacts on, on fish and the environment and that type of thing. And we're not talking about a tidal dam across the Bay of Funny or anything like that. There are very, very limited number of spots, to my understanding, that you can, you can employ the technology that attaches to the bottom of the ocean. Basically, it has to be drilled into bedrock. A lot of the area around here is sandy, where a lot of the fish beaches especially exist. There's just nowhere to anchor that, right? I mean, so they're basically anchoring it to bedrock. Small places like the passage here at Digby Neck may be, may be useful, but again, I think those are all specific situations, and I'm sure there'll be a, you know, a robust environmental review of each of those, each of those, you know, applications, test sites. So, I mean, I think we're a long way away from, you know, that maybe with the hydro power piece, I'd, I'd like to think we're closer, but I guess maybe we'll deal with the specifics when we, when we get to it.
As far as existing green energy technologies, solar and wind are the ones that are the most well-known. They're the low-hanging fruit of the bunch, but we want to show support. I know the municipal Digby has done a lot of work with tidal and just recognize that it is a possible future for our region as well.
Madam CAO.
So just, maybe just to take one, one step back, just for clarification, so a number of years ago, the Western REN did a piece of work to identify opportunities for growing our economy at the regional level, and the opportunities that were identified came with some caveats. And one of the caveats was the poor distribution and capacity of energy in our region. So that prompted the work that the REN is doing now, and so the conversation is around, if we can't, if we can't access or import the energy we need to grow our region, what can we do? So the dialogue isn't about what types of energy can we produce here, what opportunities exist to solve our energy problem ourselves, and then maybe commercialize it.
Yeah, that's right.
Look, I have one quick comment. For years, way back in my first term, when I found out that, at the time, I believe it was the Publica Wind Farm that was being built, and at the time, we were told that we did not have the capacity to build any more, any more power generating stations, whether that be through solar, whether it be through wind, any large scale, and what I'm talking about, not a, not a micro or a small scale, but a large scale. Or even, one thing that was mentioned is some sort of power generator that, that just actually works with the ocean waves as well. And the, the line that you highlighted, the 69 kilovolt, or kilovolt line, I believe it was, that runs from Yarmouth up to basically Greenwood, was always an area of concern. And we also know that that, that line has been giving Nova Scotia Power a lot of issues where it's an old line, it's been breaking, and I've been an advocate for years, and we used to have meetings, and I remember attending a couple in, in the Golf and Country Club, not this term, but the term before, we used to have, I think it was, bi-yearly meetings with them, and that was always brought up as a concern to Nova Scotia Power, the capacity down here. We have a lot of the natural resources, whether it was solar or wind at least, the two most well-known ones, that we had not, if someone wanted to do something out here, whether it was offshore on some of the islands or something, there was not the capacity to transmit it to other areas. And that was notified back then as a big issue, and I'm very glad to see that it's still being pointed out.
Yeah, that's right. So where there is such strong opportunity for green energy generation in this area, we don't want to be left behind, we want to be part of the solution. It's best that we're not importing all of the energy from other parts of the province. Let's build our own strong energy future and have the security knowing that it's being generated here and that the jobs are here as well.
Yeah, just those two small wind turbines at the three municipalities that they're owning, that, that just shows, goes to show, it's, from my understanding, the last time I checked, they're, they're working well above our expectations of what we thought they would generate. So that just goes to show that the potential's here, it is here.
Not necessarily with a, a large scale, but even if people could have their own power generating things and stuff like that, so.
And if I can just add on to that, Mr. Chairman, so, you know, part of the benefit of the work that we're collaborating with our partners at the REN on here is to inform public policy decisions too. So for example, our Joint Green Energy Committee has some successful solar projects, and we're limited to continuing to leverage those opportunities by public policy at the provincial level around access to competitions to bid on projects for that. So, you know, it's, it's a critical piece in terms of creating the data to lobby and advocate for the things we need that are the foundational blocks to putting resilience in our economy.
Yeah, and a lot of the work that we've done to add to that, like through the climate change study that we hit, or the climatic study that we had, and a lot of people always thought that this end of the province was foggy, well, we have the data proving that it's absolutely not the case.
Yeah, this is actually one of the sunniest portions of Canada when you look at the photovoltaic potential.
Yeah, and you had mentioned that in your presentation, so that was, that was quite interesting, and that's something that we've got to open a lot of people's eyes to, because I didn't believe it myself until I actually seen the data. So I see there's no more questions, so thank you very much, everyone, for coming in, very good presentation, and I'm very glad that municipal units had agreed to, that we'd send the five-year contract, and I was very happy, because I signed up myself, I think.
Us too, thank you very much.
Erica, Erica come around with the contract, so that's, that's a fact, there was a signature on it from at least the municipal year.
Perfect.
So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on, item number nine in camera, there's no in-camera items, Madam CAO. Item number 10, there's no in-camera recommendations, so I'll move, entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Patty Durkey, seconded by councillor Trevor Cunningham. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.